Hello and welcome all. Before proceeding, I pay my respects to the Murrimina people as the traditional and original custodians of the land on which we meet, and acknowledge the continuing connection of the Tasmanian Aboriginal people to the skies, land and waterways. I pay respect to elders past and present. Before we commence with tonight's council meeting, please let us all pause for a quiet moment of reflection and respect. Well, thank you, councillors, ladies and gentlemen, please be seated. Well, good evening and welcome to the Clarence City Council Meeting of Monday, the 3rd of February 2025. This meeting is being broadcast live on YouTube, and what is said in this meeting is all protected by privilege, and there is a link to the agenda papers on council's website. I note that Ms Shay is going with us this evening as acting CEO, and I thank her for exceptional leadership of the organisation during Mr Nelson's leave. Item number two is apologies, there are no in full house. Item number three is declarations of interest of councillors or close associate. Are there any declaration from councillors? There being none, we now heading to our omnibus items, item number four, 4.1, the minutes of the council meeting held on the 30th of January 2025 have been circulated. Are there any matters arising? Being none, we're now moving to 4.2 Mayor's Communications. First one, I'd like to acknowledge the passing of Mr Maurice Potter, and colleagues may be aware of Mr Potter's passing, and before I invite colleagues to stand for a moment, silence in memory of Mr Potter, I invite councillor Heather Chong to move the condolence motion. Thank you councillor Chong.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Many here, and in the wider community, will have known Maurice Potter, who lived the majority of his life on the Southarm Peninsula. He was a builder, a dedicated supporter of the RSL, who helped the planning and building of the original club rooms, still there, the cafe, the salon, the gym and the pharmacy. And his passion for history also came through as he wrote about the sub-branch and fought direction. In 2004, he was awarded a certificate of merit from the Australian RSL. He didn't rest there though, also volunteering with the local fire brigade, SAPRA and St Barnabas. But it will be his passion for history that is perhaps his greatest legacy for Southarm and the wider Clarence community. A long-time member of council's cultural history advisory group, his knowledge and generosity in sharing were valued by all. In 2019, the Maurice Potter History Room was opened at the community centre in Southarm, full of pictures, oral recordings and fascinating information about the peninsula, its history and its colourful characters. A true gentleman who loved to share his love of history, his tales and knowledge will certainly be missed. Balae Maurice.
Councillor Chong, thank you. I now invite all councillors and ladies and gentlemen to please stand for a moment of respect for Mr Potter. Colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, thank you. I would also like to table a letter from William Green of Lindisfarne, thanking council for the quick response grant which supported him with his uniform and travel expenses for the Australian men's and mixed netball championships held in Brisbane in 2024. Mr Green writes, Dear Mayor Blomley, I'm writing to thank you on the Clarence City Council's quick response grant for supporting me with my uniform and travel expenses for the Australian men's and mixed netball championships held in Brisbane 2024. The opportunity to represent my state was an absolute honour. Whilst the Tasmanian men's and mixed netball boys under 17 teams did not win a game, the experience is one I always remember. During the week-long tournament, we played against some amazing athletes and teams from around Australia, and our teams showed great sportsmanship, skill, determination and pride. My takeaways from the tournament include some new mates and a desire to continue to play men's netball and improve my skills on court. I hope that more boys and men take up men's netball in Tasmania. Thank you again for supporting me and giving me the opportunity to represent my state in netball. And that's from William Green of Lindisfarne. Thank you, Mr Green. I'll table that. I now move on to 4.2.3 diary entries, and my diary entries from the 14th of January through to today, the 3rd of February, have been circulated. I also thank the deputy mayor councillor Ritchie for representing me as she often does, and I table those. We're now moving to 4.3 council workshops, as listed in the agenda. Tabling of petitions, acting CEO, are there any petitions?
Thank you, Mayor, there are no petitions.
Thank you very much. We now move on to 4.5, reports from outside bodies. I understand from councillor Walker and councillor Warren, there are no reports from them to present, nor is there for me for Tas Water or the Greater Hobart Committee. And now I move on to reports from council and special committees and other representative bodies, so firstly is Chair of the City Development Advisory Committee, I table the minutes as attached to the agenda. Are there any other reports for tabling this evening? Councillor Chong?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I table the Richmond Advisory Committee minutes from November?
Thank you. Councillor James?
First a question through you, Mr Mayor, to the deputy mayor. The minutes of the active living advisory committee, is there a report forthcoming?
Deputy Mayor, are you happy to take that question?
Yes.
Thank you, thank you Deputy Mayor.
Yes, thank you to councillor James for the question. Those minutes have since arrived at the active living committee, and the process for which we will deal with minutes is still an ongoing discussion with the committee, so I will report back, but that hasn't been finally concluded one way or another, so as you can imagine, we're getting minutes from other working groups that are coming up, so how we're going to deal with those is still a matter for discussion, but we certainly have received them.
Any other report, councillor Walker, thank you.
No, but I'm speaking on the item to say that I appreciate the fact that committee meeting minutes are now being included in the agenda and circulated to us. That level of transparency provides, is not unusual for the community, but gives me a degree of confidence to support omnibuses with all material in front of me.
Thank you councillor Walker. Any other comments or reports? There being none, I move down to 4.6, the weekly briefing reports. The weekly briefing reports of the 13th, 20th and 27th of January 2025 have been circulated to councillors. Are there any matters arising? Councillor James?
Thank you, Mr Chairman. The first one is in relation to the 20th of January, and that refers to the Begonia Street sealing and traffic calming. And may I say that a number of residents have approached me, and I'm sure others in this place, to thank council for the long last development of Begonia gravel into a sealed section of the road. My question is in relation to item four on Begonia Street sealing. I'm aware that there was some, a matter that needed to happen first before the Begonia Street upgrade occurred, sorry, the Begonia, yes, upgrade occurred, and that was for calming measures on the corner or at the junction of Begonia and Malana. They have been completed and they are right in action, thanks. The other part of it was the Malana and Beach Road intersection, and I did table a motion in this place a year or two ago, and I understood that before the Begonia gravel road was to be upgraded, that there was to be a report on the Malana and Beach Road intersection. And I put the question to you and to the appropriate officer, has work on that or is a workshop pending in relation to the Malana and Beach Road upgrade?
Thank you councillor. Before I call on Mr Graham, let's remind colleagues that if we could keep questions brief, please, not to make comments, this is actually just asking questions on the weekly briefing report for clarification, we don't need a dissertation. Mr Graham?
Through you, Mr Mayor, I will provide a briefing to council to update, because from my last memory is probably six months ago when we updated that. I don't believe that we were to provide a report or anything before the works were started, but I will update council this week on the status of that project.
Thank you, Mr Graham. Councillor James, does that answer your question?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you.
I won't go into great depth in relation to this matter, but it's fairly important that I raise it in this chamber, and that is in relation to the Pipe Clay Lagoon and Roaches Beach draft coastal management. Some time ago, there was a report that was presented to a workshop back in 29th of July 2021 regarding some costings and options in relation to any upgrade for the Pipe Clay esplanade. So, having said that, given that the reference is to the coastal management plan and the peer group review as anticipated in February 2025, will that peer group report address any of those options that occurred in relation to any maintenance or stabilisation of the pavement on Pipe Clay Lagoon, a Pipe Clay esplanade, or any of the other options 2B and 2C, which was for major upgrade?
Mr Graham, please.
Through you, Mr Mayor. The point of the peer review is to review the two draft coastal management plans we've received, they're not to peer review the options for the actual road. The management plans is to try and give councillors strategic direction, how to deal with these areas suspect to high risk and how our coastal hazards policy applies and vice versa. So, once we receive the peer review, we'll further report back to council on the next phases of their coastal management plans.
Thank you, Mr Graham.
With the supplementary, will that mean that there will be some presentation to us on what are the options in relation to any of the upgrade or maintenance on Pipe Clay esplanade?
Mr Graham?
Not at this stage, the purpose is actually prepare the plans to give councils the strategic direction on how to deal with this high-risk coast in relation to our current policy.
Thank you, Mr Graham. Councillor James, anything else? Any other colleagues wishing to raise a matter with regards to weekly briefing reports? Like, there being none, I know they're at the end of our omnibus items, can I please have a mover, councillor Chong, second to councillor Warren? All those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you colleagues. Before we move on to item number five, public question time, I'd just invite if there's any people, either colleagues or in the gallery that'd like to remove their jackets, I'm conscious of the temperature, please feel free to do so. You're always a step ahead though councillor Mulder, so thank you. All right, moving now on to item five, which is public question time. Public questions on notice, we have two from Mr Bradley Walker of Howra, as listed in the agenda, acting CEO.
Thank you, Mayor. There are two questions tonight, both from Mr Bradley Walker of Howra. The first question reads, following up to question at council meeting of 13th January 2025 in relation to SD 2010/44, can the community be assured that this development will abide by permit condition 35? Must be landscaped and protected in accordance with the recommendations of the botanical survey and fauna habitat assessment, which includes within the conclusion, the proposal should include clear commitments to eradicate target weeds from the properties with an integrated replacement of box thorn with blue gums where opportune, includes sufficient land to provide habitat for the planting of 50 to 100 plus blue gums before council issue the developer documents for issue of titles. The answer is, the subdivision application SD 2010/44 was approved on the 22nd of February 2013 and has been subject to several minor amendments in the intervening period. There are multiple permit conditions that impact on the design, landscaping, weed management, fencing, associated bushfire management, maintenance and bonding of the public open space and road lots. In addition, there are permit conditions relating to the staging, final plan sealing and the transfer lots for each stage. As per the answer to Mr Walker's question, at 13th of January 25 meeting, final plans for each stage will not be sealed until all relevant permit conditions are satisfied. The second question from Mr Walker is, on 20th of November 2019, Ian Nelson authorised summons notice 19-92499 to be dealt in relation to an infringement notice for using land contrary to the planning scheme. What planning evidence did Ian Nelson have or require to have on file before issuing such enforcement onto a private resident? The answer is, as Mr Walker is aware, this matter is now under appeal to the full court of the Supreme Court and is inappropriate to answer. Thank you.
Thank you, acting CEO. Moving on to item 5.3, answers to previous questions taken on notice as listed in the agenda, now move to questions without notice. Are there any questions from the gallery this evening? Mr and Mrs Marsh, Mr Marsh, if you could go first, please. Use your drill, please, Nauman Suburb, thank you, Mr Marsh.
I'm Victor Marsh on the bluff, Bill Reeve. At the last council meeting, councillor Holm put a motion on notice relating to public meetings and electoral polls. His motion was promoted quite substantially in the media. The majority of the councillors voted for it to be discussed further at a council workshop. My question is, has the workshop been held, and if not, has a date been set?
Mr Marsh, our first workshop will be held on Tuesday, the 11th of February. As to the scheduling of items, that's something that the CEO, acting CEO is the case, that the ELT work with to determine as a priority, and we'll come to that in due course, but we'll keep you updated on that. Mrs Marsh?
I'm Joanne Marsh, Bill Reeve. I've been taking interest in the progress of the community awareness campaign. I have recently had cause to review the July 8th 2024 meeting when this campaign was adopted by council. In the discussion about the motion, the mayor's main focus was on the behaviour of keep all warriors and trolls. During public question time earlier in the meeting, the mayor said to me, we have a motion on the agenda tonight, a motion from councillor Kennedy, that you would do well to look at in the recording. Mr Mayor, what did you mean by that statement?
Well, obviously you've looked at the recording, Mrs Marsh, so that's, thank you very much for doing that.
Sorry.
You've looked at the recording, so I would have thought that'd be fairly straightforward as to the concern people have with some of the behaviour in the community.
So, no.
Mrs Marsh, that's your question, take a seat. Are there any other questions?
No, I want to know.
Mrs Marsh, we're not going, this is the start of the year, we're not going to have a repeat.
You made a personal statement.
Mrs Marsh, Mrs Marsh.
We have a motion on the agenda tonight, a motion from councillor Kennedy that you would do well to look at in the recording, and I want to know, what did you mean by that statement?
Mrs Marsh, I've answered your question.
I'm not a troll and I'm not a keep all warrior.
Take your seat, Mrs Marsh.
No, I'm sorry, I'm not accepting that answer.
Well, Mrs Marsh, we're not going to go through this every year, surely.
Sorry?
You've been asked to take your seat.
You haven't answered the question.
You have, I have answered the question.
What was the answer?
You have looked at the recording, Mrs Marsh, clearly, you just said you've looked at the recording.
What?
So, that's why I suggested that you do, and you've done it, so thank you. Please take your seat or leave. Different rules don't apply to you, Mrs Marsh. All right, are there any other questions from the public gallery?
Yes, please.
Thank you, Nauman Suburb, please, sir.
David Carr from Oceana Drive in Tranmere, I want to ask the councillors about Drury Point Road between the Southarm Highway and the settlement down by the creek, that's the sealed section. There are now three more warehouses coming into service, and one very large one along that section of road. There is nowhere for schoolkids to walk, little old men to walk, anyone to ride their bikes, people from the police school to go jogging. We need a footpath along Drury Point Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Carr. I'll take that one on notice, because I actually don't think anyone disagrees with you.
Anyone agrees with you?
I don't think anyone disagrees with you, so I think there's wide agreement that you make a point, you make a point really well made. As you'd appreciate with the widening of that particular road and working with the Department of State Growth, all that is being looked at at the moment. Is there anything you can add, Mr Graham?
Three, Mr Mayor. When council has been, the last couple of years, adopted funds for missing links, in terms of missing footpaths, we have kilometres. We're talking 20 years' worth of work at least for us to install footpaths. Some of them got them on one side of the road, some roads have got no footpaths, as we're saying, but council is looking at that at every annual budget at the moment. And we're looking at certainly, from an officer's point of view, of identifying these and how we can bring this forward for council consideration.
Thank you, Mr Graham. Mr Carr, we'll undertake to have a detailed response in the minutes, and I'll make sure a copy's emailed through to you as well. So, thank you for your questions, sir. All right, I don't think Ms Slade has a question for us, so if that being the case, we might move now on to item number six. I take it there's no deputations either, acting CEO?
No, that's correct.
All right, colleagues, well, thank you. Now, moving on to item number seven, which is our planning authority matters. I advise that council now intends to act as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act of 1993. Our first item, 7.1, is a planning application for 52 Montague Bay Road, Montague Bay conditions and alterations for a single dwelling. I'll call for a mover of the recommendation, please. Thank you councillor Hume, second to councillor Kennedy, thank you. Councillor Hume?
Mayor, I believe it's pretty straightforward, as per the officer's recommendation.
Thank you councillor Kennedy.
Thank you, Mayor.
Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Yep, thank you, Mr Mayor. I thank my colleagues for moving and seconding this motion. As a person who previously lived on Montague Bay Road, it actually surprises me that it's taken this long to start to see some of these types of development applications come forward, because I was one of the people who bought a house 20, more than 20 years ago now, and had plans to do upstairs and all the rest of it, so it's not surprising to see some of these start to come forward. I think it's taken a little bit longer, there are already quite a diversity of different types and styles of homes as people renovate. I think, as we all heard from our briefing on this particular proposal, that it is quite a well-thought-through proposal, and I expect that we'll start to see many more of these types of proposals in some of our more traditional areas, so we probably want to start to get used to seeing some of them, and I'll look forward to seeing them come through, and I congratulate the proponents on putting this one forward in the way that they have, so I'm pleased to support the motion.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Anyone else wishing to speak to this item? There being none, councillor Hume, right of reply? Okay, I put the motion, that is the recommendation, the planning application for additions and dwellings at 52 Montague Bay, Montague Bay be approved subject to conditions and advice. I'll put the recommendation, all those in favour. That's unanimous, thank you colleagues. Moving now on to item 7.2, which is planning application for 2B Cambridge Road, Bill Reeve and Jason's Waterway, the passenger ferry terminal upgrades. Is there a mover for the recommendation? Councillor Mulder, is there a seconder? Thank you councillor, councillor Mulder, the floor is yours, please.
I can understand, Mr Mayor, your reluctance to allow me to lead this one. This is a proposal to work with this ferry terminal, and there are a number of issues that are concerned with it. So, shouldn't we wait until they build the other one, the one at Devonport, before we start building one here? It is a tongue-in-cheek remark, but the issue with the one in Devonport does have parallels here, Mr Mayor. The parallels are that when they tried to build the ferry terminal, we had two government, basically government departments, and we had a bloody-minded dinosaur of a minister who insisted that they learn to play in the sandpit. Here we have significant ferry terminals, and we cannot get them to be serviced by Metro. As a result, there is enormous parking issues being created in the Kangaroo Bay area. In fact, council has opened up parking spaces contrary to the policy that these ferries were not to be park and ride, and here we go. We won't, perhaps the minister should tell Metro and Ports or State Growth to play in the sandpit and sort this out so that the ferry services do not become park and ride situations which are after the traffic jams. Park and ride is meant to be before the traffic jams. So, unless we get some ferry, some buses terminal, and this comes to a point, the ferry terminal, there's lots of parking around the hotel, we need to rearrange that parking so buses can service the ferry terminal. Then we will have proper public transport, then we stand a chance of getting these things through. So, here we have a proposal to build a terminal, and I for one think it's a good proposal. I think a far better proposal would be if we had engineered that very expensive pier, the breakwater that goes out into the harbour, to be able to take the ferries there. That would have been a really good solution, and it may have been that we needed a floating pier and those sorts of things, because putting it up in where it is, and there is a bit of a problem there, is that you get the wake and the wash of ferries, high-powered ferries coming in. This is the same issue that's occurring in Lindisfarne Bay, and if people say, don't, you know, they're dual cats and all the rest of it, they're catamarans and they don't have huge washers, then I could suggest you go out sailing one evening when the ferry runs past and watch all the yachts that are smart enough to be in a position to surf off the bow waves. Or ask the people at Cornelian Bay, who have, when the high tide, when the mona ferries go up, guess what? It washes up into their boat sheds, and some of them, you know, they're occupied, and guess what? They have high tide in their lanterns. So, there is an issue with these sorts of things, there are things to be done. However, as a terminal itself, yes, let's get on with it and let's do it, but for heaven's sake, let's get a government that's prepared to get its own agencies to talk to each other, because they're not GBEs in the sense that, why would you insist they make a profit line? These are public facilities.
Thank you councillor Mulder. Councillor Hunter?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I'm happy to support this development, there are extensive conditions which range, will cover everything just about you could think of environmentally, which is great in regards to the marine environment. And interestingly, there were only two representations which were about bicycle security storage, which was relevant and considered, but unfortunately not relevant under the planning scheme. I think it will be a vast improvement to the facilities that currently exist, and hopefully more people are encouraged to take the ferry, but like councillor Mulder noted, I'm a huge fan of the metro service and taking the bus, and I hope that the two can work together in the future.
Thank you councillor Hunter. Any other colleagues wishing to, councillor James, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and may I say from the outset that I will support the recommendation. And for those who were present at the briefing on Friday, I congratulated the planner and all of those recommendations that have been put forward, because it dots the i's and crosses the t's just about on every environmental matter, and most of you know in this place I am concerned about environmental matters, and this is for the first time in my years that I've been in this place, that we've had a really chapter and verse account of what should be undertaken. And remember, this is a development on behalf of the government, and of course, the minister has done a lot of media work.
has done a lot of media work in relation to this, and he ought to be congratulated because this is something we need to have here as part of the Durrant Ferry Transport Network. So, having said that, there's a couple of things I just want to bring to council's attention. As you know, and listening to the media and listening in to Leon Compton, as I do each day, there has been a lot said about the spotted handfish, and it was raised in this demonstration on Carlton Beach over the weekend where nearly 2,000 people expressed their concern about the development of these pens for fishing, salmon breeding in the Storm Bay. So, the spotted handfish, and on page 57, a handfish clearance dive should be conducted immediately prior to commencement. Also, on page 58, it says, and I quote, "Where possible, pile driving activities should occur outside of the large whale migratory season or peak abundance, which is June to November." And I was corrected on Friday when I asked the question as to where, how is this relevant in relation to whales in that vicinity of the pier? But I was advised that sound does travel many, many kilometres, and that by the very nature is why the environment have actually put this in as a condition. So, look, there is a huge amount of conditions here, and so I posed this question, and that is, will the government, will the minister and his department follow through on these and make sure all of these conditions are met because they are extensive? And as I mentioned earlier, it is a chapter and verse account of what I could see and haven't experienced in this place over the years. The other question that I do have, and it's only a question, is in relation to parking. There has been nothing mentioned in here, nor has it been really needed to be addressed because this is an application from the department, and that pertains to their extension into Kangaroo Bay and following these conditions that have been actually provided by the head planner in this place. So, as having said that, it's something that we need to address, and if, as it says in the report, that this pier will have to, will make cater for two ferries pulling up parallel to the pier, which means more people using it, and parking, and has there been any sort of discussion in relation to that? So, may I pose the question through you, Mr Mayor, to the head planner? Were there any discussions with the department in relation to car parking in relation to the development that's before this council?
Mr Mark.
Through you, Mayor. Thank you, councillor James, for the question. I can't answer whether or not there were specific discussions, but with regard to the planning scheme for port and shipping use, there's actually no requirements under the Parking and Sustainable Transport Code. So, the need to provide additional parking isn't required under the scheme. And as we discussed at the workshop last week, with the potential, it's questionable with regard to the intensification of the use, but even so, the scheme doesn't require that you have additional car parks. The existing car park that's adjacent to it is partially on council land, partially on crown land, and therefore would be a separate matter for council and crown to negotiate any change to that car park if necessary off their own bat.
Thank you, Mr Mark. Thank you, councillor James. Any other colleagues wishing to contribute? Have there been none? Before I call on councillor Mulder for his summation, I'll end this debate as a councillor, not as your mayor. From the outset, as longtime vocal advocate for the Durrant Ferry Service, it has been fantastic to witness this service grow from strength to strength. The proposed upgrades will improve accessibility, provide appropriate shelter to suit the testimonial weather and river tides, and will provide safer boarding for passengers. The upgrades will only serve to make the service more attractive as well as add to the aesthetic of the Bell Reef foreshore. Additionally, secure bike storage facilities will help reduce the need to drive and park cars in the area. As we know, the service was first established using largely existing infrastructure and has proven to be highly valuable by taking cars off key roads, especially the Tasman Bridge during peak hour, while adding to the vibrancy of the city of Clarence. Pleasingly, it is now a regular form of transport for many commuters and benefits residents, workers, and many business operators here in the city of Clarence. Colleagues, without doubt, the Durrant Ferry Service is a fantastic example of what can be achieved when all levels of government work together, with the federal government providing $20 million to build ferry infrastructure across Greater Hobart. The rapid uptake of the service has proven the viability for expansion, and new terminals have been earmarked, as we know, for development in Lindisfarne, Sandy Bay, and Wilkinson's Point. The city of Clarence engaged with our community and conducted an extensive public consultation last year regarding the desire and preferred location for the Lindisfarne service. Pleasingly, the public consultation generated a lot of responses, with seven in 10 respondents telling us that they expect to use a Lindisfarne service and that Natone Street was identified as the preferred location. Colleagues, for many years now, I have strongly lobbied for passenger ferries to play an integral role in a public transport solution. There ought to be numerous ferries plying our majestic River Durrant, and it is pleasing to see the state government step up and deliver this important upgrade to the supporting infrastructure at Bell Reef. I wholeheartedly support this recommendation and encourage all colleagues to do likewise. Councillor Mulder, right of reply, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. A couple of issues raised in the debate. The idea of these ferry terminals from the very outset was for pedestrian, cycle, and subsequently personal mobility vehicle type access. And as I said in my introduction, parking should be discouraged, not encouraged. And as for the idea, you know, this is the media hype that surrounds this, Mr Mayor, that it took 5,000 passengers means 5,000 less cars on the Tasman Bridge. I have yet to see one iota of evidence that there is less traffic on the Tasman Bridge since the ferry cars went in than there is before. There may be less people catching buses, there may be less people cycling or, God forbid, walking over the Tasman Bridge, but there is no evidence, and the congestion lines this morning, and school isn't even back yet, was way back to Tunnel Hill at peak hour, would suggest that maybe it is not the solution to the traffic bridge, but it is a very convenient and effective way of getting across the river. So, and that's where the buses come in, Mr Mayor, so strongly. When the schools come back and everyone is driving over the bridge with their precious cargo on board to get to the public schools, and they have to go over the bridge, they have to do those sorts of things, when we end up with a system that encourages those parents to put them on the buses, that the buses service the ferry terminal, then we will start to see an impact on the Tasman Bridge. Because for me, I haven't seen one, and as you all know, I'm not unfamiliar with the traffic that flows across the Tasman Bridge. So, you know, this idea of being about a traffic congestion busting, I think there is no evidence for that whatsoever. That doesn't mean I don't think we should be having ferries, but stop justifying it in the ideas of, oh, there's nowhere to park and there's nowhere, and we're taking cars off the Tasman Bridge. Because, you know, the growth of the Tasman Bridge, Mr Mayor, and you're on the public record of saying this, over the next 20 years, it would just choke unless we come up with a decentralised system of government and CBDs, and not everything is reliant on the public servants, the hospitals, and all those other facilities having to be in the centre. We need to decentralise employment if we're going to solve these traffic problems. And the ferries are not a solution to the congestion of the Tasman Bridge, they are just a more effective way of public transport getting across the river.
Thank you, councillor Mulder. Well, colleagues, I'll now put the recommendation, and that is that the planning application for the passenger ferry terminal upgrade be approved subject to conditions and advice. All those in favour? That's unanimous, thank you, colleagues. Wonderful. Well, I now, we now conclude our deliberations as a planning authority under the Land Use Planning and Approvals Act of 1993. Moving on to 8.4 through to 8.4.1, sorry, 8.4, which is governance. 8.4.1, the Australian Coastal Council Association Committee of Management Vacancy. There's a recommendation before us. I note the recommendation, depending how the debate goes, we might, I might take this or deal with them ad sereatum, that is, first of all, noting councillor Hunter's resignation, and then call for nominations, if that's the will of the meeting. Councillor Hunter, would you like to move this recommendation? Thank you. Is there a seconder? Thank you, councillor Kennedy. Councillor Hunter.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, I regretfully have submitted my resignation from the Australian Coastal Council's Association, and it's mainly for two reasons. Firstly, personal reasons, my work schedule has changed and I'm no longer available at that meeting time, and I'm not one to let things slide, so I'd rather someone else step in who's interested and fill those shoes. Secondly, I feel that the association needs a refresh. So, the association was formerly known as the National Sea Change Task Force, but underwent a name change in July 2015 to the Coastal Council's Association. I feel it's lost its way in the time I've been on there and potentially since 2015 when it had its name changed, and it needs a reset. Now, I have asked and pushed for a strategic plan to be developed as well as a succession plan because the executive officers who manage the association are fabulous, but they are very late in life, and I fear that they won't be interested in staying on much longer, and there's no plan of how the association will continue beyond that point. Now, before suggesting that Clarence Council actually pulls out of the association, I feel it would be best if another councillor joined the association with fresh eyes to see if they have a different perspective, or they might also be able to have more influence than I in driving both a strategic plan and a succession plan. Now, I will hold off on nominations, is that correct, Mr Mayor?
Well, you could suggest someone by all means, councillor Hunter. The floor is yours.
I would like to nominate councillor Mulder for a few reasons. Firstly, he is another councillor who sits on the Sustainable Advisory Committee, and I believe this association fits well with the purpose of the Sustainability Advisory Committee. Also, he's got a keen interest in climate change and particularly along the coast, as we have all heard for many years, and I believe, I'm confident that he'll ask the right questions of the existing committee and will be able to drive some change, and I think he'll also find some valuable learnings of what's being done in the rest of the nation in regards to coastal climate change.
Thank you, councillor Hunter. Councillor Kennedy, a seconder.
Thank you, Mayor. And I'd just like to thank councillor Hunter for, first of all, your service, but for also, for the first time in my six years on council, enlightening us to actually some of the information that's actually happening on the council. So, that's the most information that I've had in six years, and that you've shared with us through workshops, and I'd just like to thank you for your time and for that information.
And councillor Kennedy, are you happy to second the nomination for councillor Mulder?
Yes, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Mulder, before I call anyone else to talk, are you, would you accept that nomination? And, sorry. There was a Freudian, there we go. Okay, so, we have a, we know that councillor Hunter has resigned, so we can accept, we can note that, recommendation number A. There is a nomination, I will just, this is a bit unorthodox, and I apologise, please bear with me, are there any other nomination, anyone else interested in serving as our representative on the Australian Coastal Council Association Committee of Management? There being none, and councillor Mulder is happy to accept that. If colleagues are comfortable, and if people still want to talk, they're keen after the vote, I will, actually, no, we can't do that. Councillor Mulder, would you like to say a few words, please? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, yes, and thank you for the nomination and the seconding. I was originally one of the people who put their hands up to be on this after the last council elections, but graciously withdrew because I knew I was on the hiding to nothing when the quality of people like councillor Hunter had put their name up. So, I've had enough defeats in my life, I didn't need a gratuitous extra one. My concern, and this has been raised with me with councillor Hunter, is that the change of name from the National Sea Change to the Coastal Council's Association, if there's one thing the coastal of Australia suffers greatly from, the greatest issue is sea level rise and also the coastal areas being subject to inundation. Just have a look at what's going on in council at the moment. Now, you can be a climate change pagan or a climate change believer. The fact is that our coastal zones need the sorts of strategic directions that councillor Hunter is talking about, which deals with inundation and deals with sea level rise. So, if this association is losing its way and is starting to go into the area of, you know, pretending these things aren't the big issues they are facing, then it really, we really do need to start to shake it, and we need to shake it, or, as we have noted, there is a declining membership because councils, coastal councils, are not seeing the relevance of a body that doesn't have a strategic direction and that doesn't have a succession plan. The only odd thing I noticed out of all of this is that councillor Hunter mentions that many of the members of this committee and the support staff are late in life. So, I'm wondering why she's nominated someone else who's late in life to go on and take the role? Is it because you think I can, I have some influence over us late-in-lifers that some of you young, fresh ideas don't? So, anyway, I'd greatly accept the nomination, and I will be working assiduously to see if we can get some strategic direction, if we can get a succession plan, and if we can't, then I will be recommending to this council that we, like so many other councils, gradually withdraw from this because it becomes a question of, you know, shall we say, running around another excuse for a national conference which everyone attends and everyone says nice things, but no one does anything. That's what strategy's about, setting up the provisions to develop action plans. If you don't have a strategy, you don't have an action plan. If you don't have an action plan, what the hell are you there for?
Thank you, councillor Mulder. So, if colleagues are comfortable, we will deal with this ad sereatum, and I've taken the liberty of slightly amending recommendation B, but the first one is the councillor Hunter's resignation from the Australian Coastal Council Association Committee of Management being noted. All those in favour? I just asked if anyone wants to speak, councillor Walker, and there was silence. So, you've got to take the jump. No, no, please, sorry, please, the floor is yours, but you've just got to jump when I call.
With the dynamic movements of the way the motion's going, I'd make a couple of points. I thank councillor Hunter for her service on this committee, or this association, but I would actually also point out Clarence's long-term connection to it, and I think that some absolutely excellent work was undertaken by councillor Von Berdo on her long-serving time there, some of which was, you know, a council's efforts were actually recognised nationally, and, you know, we have a lot at stake. So, it's a very interesting area, and I get a bit worried sometimes when people, you know, put their, you know, put their hand to their chest about climate change as a concern, but perhaps stronger on the verbal components and maybe not always as strong on the actual commitments and the planning. So, a classic case might be looking at two American councils, governments, California the biggest in the nation, no one is more professor's concerned about climate change than... than Californian governor Gavin Newsom, no one seems to be able to manage calamities as badly, compared to his somewhat sceptical colleague in Florida, who actually does take these matters seriously and prepares for events. And one of the key things that I would hope to focus on would be adaptation. Adaptation is dealing with what's coming, with where you are, and I think one of the key points with that is, you don't make circumstances worse. So, that weighs on my mind when we think about matters like potential low-level areas of land, that some councillors might be enthusiastic to see rezoned for residential, that have known concerns around stormwater and sea level rise and other matters. But I'm hopeful that we keep up with this, and that perhaps the committee, perhaps the association evolves, but certainly, you know, we should be using this to network, to be getting best practice from around the country around the, in the adaptation space.
Thank you councillor Walker. Are there any other colleagues wishing to make a contribution to this debate? All right. So what we will do is deal with this ad sereatum. So the first recommendation moved by councillor Hunter, seconded by councillor Kennedy, is A, the councillor Hunter's resignation from the Australian Coastal Council Association Committee of Management being noted. All those in favour? We're just doing it again because we had another late speaker, all right. Now, this is where I'm going to ask for some understanding, please, and I just want to put, ask councillor Hunter and councillor Kennedy if they're comfortable with this. Part B reads that council nominates councillor Mulder as a Tasmanian representative to the Australian Coastal Council Association Committee of Management for the balance of councillor Hunter's term on the committee. Are you comfortable with that councillor Hunter?
Yes, but just a question, will I get a right to reply?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Councillor Kennedy?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Point well made. Councillor Hunter, you have your right to reply, then we'll put part B.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just wanted to make a few comments on the matters that were raised, which I appreciate. Firstly, councillor Mulder's tongue-in-cheek comment about later in life, he is younger, I suspect, than the other members I am speaking of, and I know he still has a lot to contribute. The other one was councillor Walker, and you're absolutely right, and I want to fully recognise the contributions of councillor Sharon Von Berto, as well as Clarence Council's long association with the association. And from what I understand, Clarence Council used to be very innovative in this space ten, ten years ago, however, that's changed a bit with other states on the mainland really leading the changes in this area. Tasmanian government is partially the reason why Clarence Council hasn't evolved and, and done more, as well as other things, but it is exactly for that reason that I feel it needs some fresh eyes from the council, to see if maybe I've judged it wrong and someone else has a different perspective, which is why I'm partially resigning and nominating someone else.
Thank you councillor Hunter. Now, putting the motion, part B. No, no, you've had to say, thank you. All right, part B, the council nominates, unless you've changed your mind, it better be genuine.
As if I haven't raised genuine points of order, Mr Mayor, really.
Councillor Mulder, your point of order.
My point of order, Mr Mayor, is that in your discussion, in your thing, you are nominating me as a Tasmanian representative of the Australian Clarence Council. I understand that it is, I'm representing Clarence Council, that other councils could also have representatives on the thing?
Councillor Hunter?
It's correct, so, they're both correct. Each state gets two representatives. Clarence Council is the only council in Tasmania who is a member of the association, therefore we automatically have a seat on the committee. If three Tasmanian councils were to join the association, then there would be an election by member councils as to who they wanted on the committee.
All right. So, both correct. Would you be more comfortable councillor Hunter and councillor Kennedy if it read, the council nominates councillor Mulder to the Australian Coastal Council Association Committee of Management for the balance of councillor Hunter's term on the committee? Are you comfortable with that? Is, all right, I'll put that as part B. All those in favour? Congratulations councillor Mulder. Councillor Walker, did you vote then? Okay, thank you, all right, that's unanimous, thank you very much. Moving now on, colleagues, to item number nine, there were no motions on notice. Councillor Ten, sorry, item ten, councillors' question times, there are no questions on notice, answers to questions without notice, previous council meeting, as listed in the agenda. Councillor Mulder?
Let me refer to the answer provided to my question, which related to redacted parts of the, of the assessment of the Rosney Parklands site for the AFL ovals, High Performance Centre, and the assessment of the King Brett Twin ovals. I've been advised that the redacted parts of that report relate mainly to the comparison between the two ovals. Mr Mayor, my question is, is do you share my concern that redaction of those reports which relate to councils' land, which relates to stuff we want to do on that land, that we have to redo them, is affront by the government to explain why they sent it to the Twin ovals, but they won't reveal to the people of Tasmania the reasons why they sent it there? Is it because the costs are comparable?
Well, the short answer is, like many in this chamber, I share the concern that the reports haven't been shared openly and freely with council. We've been advised as to why Department of State Growth and the state governments made that decision, that doesn't sit easy, easily with many of us here, but that's a decision that they've made, it's their intellectual property, they engage some consultants, and that's the determination that they've made, and even though there's been some talk about right to information applications, that hasn't been fully explored yet by this council. But the short answer to your question is that, yes, I share your concerns, it's disappointing to say the least. All right. Any other questions on this, on this item of previous council meeting questions? There being none, we move now to questions without notice, and we start the serving with the deputy mayor, councillor Ritchie. Thank you. Councillor Mulder?
Under the national electricity market, and I'm sorry, there's a bit of a preamble to this, under the national electricity market, thirteen percent of Tasmania's total energy consumption is delivered, thirteen percent is delivered from dirty brown coal across Baslink. Given that, from the Tri Valley, given that the, the elected, the executive leadership team, and you, Mr Mayor, are supplied with expensive electric vehicles, and the charging of that is done at off-peak times, is, is our, and council has a emissions reduction target, given the fact that this electricity is coming from dirty brown coal, is it appropriate that the electricity, the reduction in emissions from the electric vehicles is being attributed to our emissions reduction target, when in fact it's being produced by emissions in Victoria?
Thank you for your question councillor Mulder, there's been extensive work done in this regard, a detailed question will be provided to you in the minutes, so it'll be provided, that have taken on notice, you get a detailed, detailed answer, that'll demonstrate very clearly the numerous benefits to, to our community, our environment, indeed the rate pays in the city of Clarence, having electric vehicle range available to officers and elected members. Your second question councillor Mulder?
From that, I hope those numerous benefits include how the recharging of these electric vehicles is actually being done from green electricity and not emissions-laden electricity.
As I say, you get a detailed response. Councillor Hunter?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just a question in relation to an agenda item, which was the tabling minutes of representative bodies, which, as councillor Walker noted, is fantastic, and it's great to see some transparency, not only for the community, but also for other councillors. I just had a question, it seems fairly new to have them in the agenda, is that a standard thing going forward for the other advisory committees?
It certainly will be, and I think it's fair to say, it's taken some time to find our feet, that is certainly the intention of the executive leadership team, and also the chairs of those five overarching committees as well. We will get there, I know from the city development perspective, we're putting in place a schedule of meetings that align very nicely with those subcommittees, if you like, we'll also look at the formation of a new committee as well, to further sort of address the needs of the city. So yes, it will be a standing agenda item, and hopefully we'll get that all in train sooner rather than later.
Thank you.
Anything else councillor Hunter? Thank you. Councillor Hume?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two questions, and they relate to the recently announced proposal by the Minister for Planning to make changes to the, the urban growth boundary. The first question is, there's a fairly tight timeframe for comment, and I'm wondering what the, the process and timeline will be for council to submit comment, or develop some comment on it, and whether we'll have an opportunity to consider it in a workshop.
Thank you. From memory, it's a six-week timeframe for consultation to get feedback, and I know that Mr Ma looked at this today, it was dropped last thing on a Friday afternoon, so Mr Ma, if you could provide a more detailed answer, please.
Through you, Mayor. Thank you for the question councillor Hume. Yes, I've discussed this with the CEO, the timeframe is tight because it actually finishes on our March meeting date, which means that we'll need to bring the matter to council for comment on the 24th of February. To that end, we intend to bring it to the workshop on the 17th of February, so the council is able to ask questions and be fully briefed on it, before we bring a report to council on the 24th, so that's the timeframe at this stage, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr Ma. Councillor Hume?
Thank you, Mayor, and I thank Mr Ma for that answer.
The second question, I mean, I actually know the answer to this because I'm a member of the steering committee, but I'm asking the question to put it on the public record, I guess, and that is, how does this proposal feed into the review of the Southern Tasmania Regional Land Use Strategy, and what implications will that have for the, for the timeframe in which the strategy is going to be developed or reviewed?
Thank you councillor Hume. Mr Ma?
Through you, Mayor. Thank you again councillor Hume. Yes, as you said, you're on the steering committee, so you do have some advanced knowledge with regard to this. The key issue is the minister has decided to, upon request by the Minister of Planning, has brought, sought to bring forward the consideration of the urban growth boundary from the rest of the Strelus review. To that end, I understand this will delay that Strelus review, because obviously this matter needs to be resolved, to then make sure that there's consistency between the rest of the Strelus review and this. As the mayor pointed out, it has a six-week period for consultation, after which the minister will consider it. Some of these items that have been put forward by the minister clearly weren't in the, being contemplated by the Strelus Working Group, so they'll be breaking new ground. So, as to how long the delay, I couldn't tell you, but it will delay the remainder of the Strelus review.
Thank you, Mr Ma. Councillor Hume, I just thank you for your service on that committee as well. When I called you and to ask you to, to represent Clarence City Council, you didn't hesitate, and I really appreciate your interest in this very important area. It is extraordinarily frustrating, the Strelus put in place in, what, 2011, and here we are now, dragging the State Planning Office kicking and screaming, trying to take a, a proper review. It is extraordinarily frustrating. So to you and all the other members of that committee, thank you for your service, hopefully we'll get there sooner rather than later, but it has been frustrating, and I think we all share that frustration. Councillor James?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My earlier comment regarding the pipe clay espannard, and the question is basically to do with the, any of those options that were suggested in the memo of the 29th of July 2021, and in that memo it said, options for the road gravel section of pipe clay espannard, and an update on the local coastal management plan. So the two go hand in hand, so I am opposing, and I would suggest that we do have some follow-up on this, and may I say that we are spending in excess of $5 million on an upgrade of past road, and the two options that have been suggested for stabilisation of the existing pavement and a two-coat seal of pipe clay espannard is in the vicinity of $315,000. So, given that, will we be having a workshop, or will there be some discussion in relation to the upgrade of, or any of those options that have been suggested in this council memo, in relation to upgrade of pipe clay espannard?
We'll take that on notice and come back to councillor James, that one. Do you have a second question?
Yes. On my way to my office each day, I drive up Rosney Hill Road, and I look to my left and I see the beautiful open space and the trees on Charles Hand Park, and I think it's wonderful that has been retained, and I thank the government for that. Also, I can look to my right, and I do, and I can look at the Rosney Parklands, I can see the beautiful trees, the open space, the parklands. The question is, there has been extensive consultation on, on the, the City Heart Plan, and I congratulate the department, has been pursuing that. So is there any report at this stage that we could have presented to this council in relation to where we are at, and as to whether the number of submissions has been outstanding, and, and probably in light of the fact that the government stepped in and saved Charles Hand Park and Rosney Parklands?
Councillor James, considering the consultation only closed yesterday, I think in fairness to our hard-working team, they have to wade through the many excellent representations we've received, we will clearly in due course, but less than 24 hours, I think, is asking a bit much of our team, but I'm sure Miss Wicks and her team, working with the acting CEO, will have all that, is underway now, and in due course will be presented to us. Clearly it's important to get a really good overview as to the feeling out there, the engagement's been fantastic, and it's been a whole range of views, you've just mentioned your view, I tell you now, there's people with opposing views, as you'd appreciate, and that's the beauty of the democratic system we live in.
Absolutely.
But we will get a thorough briefing, and that'll be made available also to our, to our community, once we've workshopped that and accepted here in this chamber. Councillor Walker, do you have any questions, please?
Thank you. This question sort of follows in the fact that there's been some consternation around the level of redaction associated with what I'll call the geotechnical IP around the proposed High Performance Centre at Rosney Parklands. For want of a better term, using intellect, you know, using the term IP, was, I'd like to, can I be provided with what, if you like, environmental IP was provided as part of our expression of interest process, and subsequent to that, any further IP of an environmental nature that was provided after we were awarded preferred site?
I'll have to take that on notice, send investigating report back.
Subsequent to that, so, yeah, and other avenues that, depending on what, what comes from that, I guess my next avenue of appeal would be through freedom of information, but it sounds like I should be able to get all materials that council would have submitted as a right as a councillor.
So, sorry, just to clarify, that we submitted?
Yeah.
Miss Wicks? That, that work was undertaken by the Department of State Growth, councillor Walker?
So, again, what I'm saying is, did we provide any environmental IP as part of our submission? So again, what I'm saying is, did we provide any environmental IP as part of our submission? And once, upon being awarded the, the site, did we provide any environmental IP after that to State Growth?
Miss Wicks?
Mayor, we can take that one on notice and provide information.
All right. Thank you. You may have a second question now councillor Walker. No, that's okay.
No, I will now.
No, please.
Second question. Part of councillor's role is to undertake an annual review of the CEO. Can I be informed how many months overdue the annual review is, in, maybe in, in terms of months? And if I'm mistaken, and in fact is current, how many months until the next one?
Councillor Walker, that's a good question, and a timely question, thank you. The CEO review committee consists of the deputy mayor, councillor Hunter and myself. You'd be aware that late last year, the state government provided a direction, as I understand it, as to the engagement of qualified, independent persons to provide advice. So we had a, a number of, we went out to market last year, we received a number of complying tenders. As a result of this direction, they nearly doubled in price. The, the view of the committee is that, in all, and I'm happy to provide a briefing to colleagues in a workshop environment, but we had to reset the way that we address this now, because simply the cost to the rate payers was unpalatable to us, and something that we weren't able to justify, to be honest. So we've gone back to the drawing board, and as I say, I will enclose, in a workshop, provide a more detailed, I'm sorry I'm flouting here, because I'm a bit concerned about what I can and can't say in an open council meeting.
Look, I appreciate that, and I appreciate you trying to take a judicious approach to responding to the question. Perhaps, and I understand the, the solution being provided is through, through a briefing report, perhaps as a, if you like, follow-up in, for the following minutes, we can be provided when the last one was completed, for, for the purposes of the records.
Yeah, absolutely. But also, if I can just say that we haven't overstepped, overstepped the timeframe, as I understand, Miss Ellis. We have until June to put in place, so we are, we are conscious, the committee, even though I wasn't able to make that, that last meeting, we're all on the same page, and, but we will provide a briefing to colleagues in a workshop environment, which will be confidential only to elected members and, and Miss Ellis. So it is, it is something's front of mind, but there's a number of reasons why it wasn't able to be undertaken at this time. I'm sorry, I'm, I hope I'm clear with the mud, but I'll come back to in a, in a confidential setting councillor Walker. Councillor Goine?
I have a million questions, but I'm gonna try.
Only two, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I know. Can, can one of them have sort of a little bit of a breakdown of parts? Will you give me some leeway there?
Well, I think there's a bit of a precedence, so go for it.
With the live, real-time billboards, were we consulted on whether they were something that was worthy in Clarence? Do we get an idea of the cost? Do we know when they're going to actually be active? And do we know that if they have the capacity to have revenue raising capacity attached to them?
My understanding is that they're all on the type of state growth roads, their decision to put them in there. As to the last part of your question, my understanding is that yes. But Mr Graham, do you have anything else you'd like to have?
We haven't been provided details in terms of when they're going to be all finished, and the actual details on how they operate, just that their, their contractors are working on installing them, so we've been advised, and the locations.
I'm keen to say that the former Minister for Transport did tell me that that's one of the main reasons, is that we'll have cameras there, that'll detect, and that they will be revenue raising, so.
My second question is, on Friday, we attended a wonderful launch of a video on clean waterways, which was absolutely really great to attend and watch, and I hope colleagues have all watched the little video. In regards to the water testing, NRE last conducted pesticide analysis testing in 2014 on our waterways. Do we know if there's any possible update for the last, for the next, no, obviously it's been over 10 years, so if there's anything up and coming where we might be possibly going to measure the levels in our waterways?
Thank you. Mr Brennan or Miss Coburn? Mr Brennan?
I'll take that on notice.
Thank you. Councillor Goine, do you want to take some?
I was asking questions.
Well, we can't do that, we've just passed my time, so. Councillor Darko?
Yeah, just passing on something from a constituent, I'm wondering if we could have a status upgrade, update on the widening of Pass Road, and also related to that, the roads in and around the Gleepil area, that there's currently like dirt paths, but they should be sealed roads, or silver paths, rather.
Thank you. Mr Graham?
Through, Mr Mayor. We held a meeting with DSG officers last week, but they're still very much finishing their detailed design or concept phases, really, and looking at the next phase of consulting with those immediately. We don't have any details on the actual final design, or the, or exact details and timings at this stage. But we will inform council once, once we're advised of more formal timings.
Thank you, Mr Graham. Councillor Darko?
Yeah, part two is, could we get a status update on the approved developments immediately surrounding Gleepil Village?
Certainly. Mr Marr?
Through you, Mayor. Thank you councillor Darko. I'll take that on notice, but is there any way you could give me a bit more information?
Like the Burger King?
Oh, so like the commercial developments, as an update on what's been approved and yet to be constructed?
Certainly, I'll take that on notice, but yeah, I'll be able to do that.
I get asked every week when Burger King is going to be at Gleepil, so. Councillor Warren, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just a week ago, on Monday night, we had an amazing event at the Bell Reef Oval, and it was very exciting. I wasn't there personally, but my son gave me a firsthand account and said that it was a terrific night. Unfortunately, it wasn't such a terrific night for a lot of the residents, and there's been a lot of consternation about the failing of the parking management that night, and there was a lot of illegal parking, dangerous parking, including parking across driveways. So what can we do to reassure residents of the area that this will not happen at the next event?
Thank you councillor Warren. Would you like to take this one, acting CEO, please?
Thank you for the question, and provide some information. We had three, and sorry, four rangers on duty that night, and in response to complaints being received, 69 parking infringements were issued in relation to ongoing issues with parking and driver behaviour, that's something that council officers are looking at, and can provide an update, an upcoming workshop or briefing memo.
Can I also just add too, that there was a fault with the telephone line that provided as well, so. No, well, I will, because it's important that we apologise to those that tried to access that line, I've been assured that that, that matter's been rectified, it won't occur again, we're working to make sure that happens, and I know that something the deputy mayor actually contacted me during the game to bring to my attention, so thank you for that, deputy mayor. Councillor Warren?
And I certainly had people contacting me because they couldn't find any other way. My second question is, can we perhaps not use the term revenue raising and replace that with increasing road safety?
Thank you. Well, I won't be the Thorpe Police here, or tell people how to speak, so how they wish to express themselves, councillor Warren is of course up to them, but thank you as always for your input. Councillor Chong?
No, thank you.
No, no. Councillor Chong?
No, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Kennedy?
Thank you, Mayor. I wasn't planning to, but just following on from some, from some of the parking questions that we've had, and I've had a few elected members' requests, and I think I mentioned something in my last question about just the, I know it's a tricky one, because when we have days like today, everyone's going to pack to the beach, but we have had some concerns that people are parking at Seven Mile Beach in particular, blocking the volunteer fire brigade, they can't get their vehicles out, should they need them, they haven't had to as yet, but just as a question, I suppose, can we make sure that we have got some rangers there on those very busy days, if that's possible?
Mr Brennan?
Yes, Mr Mayor, thank you. Firstly, in regard to the earlier points about the email file, I'd also like to apologise for the administrative error that occurred, and we are working to ensure that that doesn't occur again, that we do improve this. With regard to the rangers, we've recently increased the number of parking rangers from two to three to four, and not looking on issues of money income, but with due compliance, we potentially will be looking to increase our ranger capability in the next budget cycles. It is an issue that we're looking to address.
Thank you very much, thank you.
Thank you councillor Kennedy. Well, I now call for a motion to move into closed meeting, please. Councillor Warren, seconded by councillor Goine, I'll put the motion, all those in favour. That's unanimous, thank you. So thank you to those members of the public, Mr Carr and others who joined us this evening, and to those joining us via the livestream from home. I look forward to seeing you in three weeks' time, same place, same time. Please enter live feed. Thank you. So I note now that we're at...